This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council. Oh. This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, January the first. Please stand for our invocation led by Trayon Wolford. Wolford? I'm sorry, I apologize. Public Safety Chaplain and remain standing for the Plagues of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? God, before we ask you for anything, we want to tell you thank you. Thank you for God giving us pure grace and sure mercy each day of our lives. We pray for these, this meeting today. Thank you for those that have dedicated their lives in public service. Thank you for their sacrifice and their service. Now, I ask that you give us innovative ideas and progressive plans to give our city more victories and less violence. I pray, God, that you continue to allow us to navigate these uncharted waters with the wisdom to take our city to a greater future. It is in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone. It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our July 1st, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off of the vibrator position. The off of the vibrator position. Any person that is desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution or ordinance of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 p.m. on a Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the City Clerk office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who recognizes any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of June 24th.
On move.
Second.
Properly moving, second in and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Men's approval.
Communication from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see everyone here. Appreciate you being here. I have several announcements this morning. We have some special guests also with us. The first announcement has to do, we really had a lot to celebrate over this past week. And we're not done yet. Last Tuesday, we welcomed some of Mobile's greatest sports legend as we celebrated the kind of revealing of the Hall of Fame Walk. It's been a phenomenal project and it will be a destination when people come to Mobile. I think anybody in the sports world will want to go look at those statues. We had several of the athletes and families were excited and they were certainly grateful for the recognition that they've received. Some of those that would join us were Robert Brazil and Billy Williams and the families of Willie McCovey and Satchel Page. But I'm excited to announce today, this is brand new, and that is that on July 31st, we'll have Ozzy Smith and the widow of Hank Aaron, Billy Aaron, will be here. And we will have somewhat of a redo to honor Hank Aaron and Ozzy Smith. It'll be in the morning instead of high noon like we did it the other day because of the heat. But anyway, really a great day last week when we revealed all of those families, reveal it to the families and looking forward to the 31st when we can see Billy Aaron and Ozzy Smith. Yesterday, we joined the United States Corps of Engineers to celebrate the new headquarters, which is on the site where the Civic Center was. For those that have seen it from the outside, to me, it's a very handsome looking, very good looking building. It's, but it's just as handsome and nice on the inside as what you see on the outside. Many people don't know this, but this Corps of Engineers District, they represent five states and also Central America. They actually handle the Panama Canal. So it's very interesting to walk through that facility yesterday and see and talk to some of the individuals that work there. We were grateful to partner with the Corps of Engineers on this project and to kind of support their operation. That's why we built a thousand place parking deck. It wasn't just for the Corps of Engineers, it's all to support the arena and anything else that is built on that site. You know, the, where you look at the arena site, you should start seeing vertical construction starting in late August, early September. Right now, what you see is a lot of red dirt and a big pile. They're not driving the pile, they're auger casting the pile in, but they're getting the foundation ready. But you should see steel starting to be stood up, as I said, late August or early September. As you look at that site, even when it's completed, there'll be a lot of red clay, still undeveloped areas. But over the period of probably the next 10 years, you could see as much as a billion dollars worth of investments invested on that site. It's hard to project what that will do from a revenue standpoint to the city of Mobile, but you can be rest assured that it'll be positive cash flow. And thinking back about the convention center that we tore down, we were losing $2 or $3 million every single year with the old Civic Center. And there wasn't any way to stop that. And so the risk that was made by the city council and the administration to invest in this, our hope is in the years to come, it'll pay multiple dividends. This morning, we had an excitement sighting announcement that many Mobileans have been waiting to hear, been waiting years to hear. And that has to do with the Amtrak. And they will officially launch, it's what they're calling the Monte Olivio Service between Mobile and New Orleans. And you can be buying tickets today by going on the Amtrak website. The tickets, about $15 between here and New Orleans. And some of that will depend on, and that's one-way ticket, it will depend on the schedule and what class, whether it's, I'll call it coach, I'm not sure what they call it. But the normal fare would be $15. Anyway, that would be August 18th. So those who are interested in going to New Orleans, go ahead and start buying your tickets. There are a lot of partners in this, the city council. Obviously, there was a lot of discussion about Amtrak. But we finally got to a place where we were comfortable in approving the contract. Couldn't have done it without Governor K. Ivey and the Alabama State Port Authority, the CSX. And the Amtrak and Port of Mobile worked closely to hammer out the contract that's necessary for the Amtrak to run on those rails, Southern Rail Commission, and of course, Amtrak. Anyway, it's going to be real interesting to see how this plays out. We have a three-year contract. During the first year, we will be able to quantify what it's bringing to the city of Mobile, whether it's beneficial to us or whether it's not. So a future city council and a future mayor will be able to make a more informed decision about further investment in Amtrak. And I think that's a great place to be. But anyway, all aboard for those that want to ride the train to New Orleans. So it is now, July is National Parks and Recreation Month and Mobile Parks and Recreation Department has been celebrating all month. It's the 40th anniversary of this nationwide celebration that honors parks, employees, and the vital role they play in American communities. This year's theme, "I Was Built Together, Played Together," and that's exactly what Mobileans have been doing in our parks. In 2024, Mobile Parks Rec Department recorded 386,000 check-ins at our local parks. And that's pretty amazing. If you think back six to 10 years ago, you know, whether it was the bathrooms, the lack of grass on the fields, you know, the parks were really not in the condition that anybody, I think, was really proud of. And so the Parks and Rec Department have done a phenomenal job bringing everything up to how it should be. But also from a programming standpoint of things to do at the parks is really, I think it's unprecedented in the city of Mobile. So at this time, I'd like to call up the Senior Director of Parks and Recreation, Kim Carmody, and several of our Parks and Rec team members. I think Gerard McCants is Gerard here, Shad Collins, Sarah Hampton, Kristen Taylor. And Kim, if there are others that you would like to join, you, I will read the proclamation, present it to you, and then y'all can have the picture made. But let's first off, let's give them a big round of applause. Wow. Okay. So while you're making your way down to the podium, and let's do this also, Kim, when it's over and when we're finished with the baseball team, we can go out to the little steps out there and we'll have another picture made out there, okay? All right? And the proclamation reads, "Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities in the city of Mobile, and whereas Parks and Recreation promote the health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Park and Recreation programming and education activities such as after-school programming, youth sports, environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks and Recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Rec Month, and whereas the city of Mobile recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby officially proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Mobile." Thank y'all so much for what you do. Well done. Kim, would you like to make a couple of remarks?
Is it on? It's on. I just want to thank everyone. This is, this is our wonderful team. In front of you, you've got a calendar of what's happening this month. This is the team that kind of put that calendar together. It goes from parks to tennis to golf to our community centers. Very, very proud that we work together and to give this to our community, our citizens. And so the round of applause really goes to the crew behind me and then their team members that actually had to stay back and work with the kids and the seniors and our therapeutic communities. But if y'all could give one more round of applause for those guys, that'd be great.
As President.
Kim, I would just like to express.
Mr. Penn and Mr. Davis.
You can let, Joel is so excited, so I'm gonna allow him to go first.
I just want to commend you for this, well, first of all, commend all of y'all for the great job you do. But this is very good. This is very, I mean, this attracts your attention. And I think it.
It jumps out at the time.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Ms. President. Kim, you always and your team just does an amazing job. I think we have the best Parks and Recreation Department in the nation.
I agree.
Everybody is excited and y'all work hard. Like, because I go to all the different events, I'm like, I just saw you Friday, you that Saturday, you that Sunday. I mean, y'all just do amazing jobs. So I just want to tell you personally, thank you so much to the team. Thank you all, because y'all doing an amazing job here in the city of Mobile.
Yeah, thank y'all so much for all the hard work.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I also just want to jump on them, Kim, and tell the same train that they're on. But thank you for all you do. I know District 6, I'm the fewest parks, but I do have the Connie Hudson Regional Senior Center and the seniors in District 6 love it, love the staff there. They're very protective of them, they love them. And so I just want to say thank you for all you do for District 6 especially. We have a beautiful park that we finished up with Medal of Honor, just getting all that taken. West Side's on its way and then obviously the Senior Center. So thank you for all you do. And I'm excited about Adult Field Day and then also the Adult Inflatables.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
Well, Kim knows how I feel about it, being that District 2 has 80% of all the parks in the whole city, if not all the parks in the whole city. So I continue to say that you guys are the best department in the city. Takes a special group of us to be able to manage all the parks that we have, plus creating additional new parks at Glenwood and the one that's at the tail end of Bradford that we're trying to do. So it takes a whole lot and I really appreciate you guys for everything that you do. Thank you.
And I want to thank you guys for supporting Parks and Rec. It means a lot to us and to the community, so I appreciate it.
Thank you so much again.
So before I recognize the baseball team, I was walking down the aisle and Danny Cordy stopped me and he said, Mayor, this past weekend, we had the primetime Gulf Coast Basketball Tournament. We had 172 youth teams playing basketball at the convention center. These, you know, people ages 6 to 16. And it was the largest basketball, youth basketball tournament ever in the history of Southwest Alabama, at least as far as we know. Anyway, a lot of people, a lot of interest in athletics and so thank you, Danny, for what you do. Now, young baseball players. So the Municipal Park Eight and Under Rookie Team, and these are seven and eight-year-olds, won the Dixie Youth Baseball State Championship on June 14th. They were undefeated and they represent about four different schools. And so they're joining us and their coaches were Chase Pritchard, if y'all were the coaches, if y'all are here, raise your hand, Chase Pritchard, Lance Heisler, and Adam Hibberts and Hunter Witten. So what we would like for y'all to do is come down in front of the city council and have your picture made. And it's a shame everybody's left and the media has no cameras here. But y'all, these kids can't hold up this championship ring and I know it doesn't fit any of their fingers. It is amazing. So y'all come on down and let's have a picture taken. Yeah, show them that ring. Which place did I get this from? So, Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Monthly finance report.
Good morning, Mr. President, Mayor of the Council, Mayor. This is the budget report that would have typically been delivered to you last week. And we intentionally held it for a week because there are some items on the council agenda that we wanted to make sure we had fully funded, animal shelter and some other things. So we want to be careful of that. So we did hold this over from one week from last week to this week. With that, I'll go over with you the highlights of the budget that you have. And there's a loose page, I'll discuss with you in just a moment. On page one of the budget report that you see, to the right, highlighted in yellow at the bottom, you'll see that our reserve fund remains fully funded at $58,626,210. That's again, a static number that will change when we adopt the budget for fiscal year 2026, but that, those funds are secure, separate from any other operating funds. The general fund operating balance as of May 31 was $113,160,977. It's an increase of about $5 million from the previous month. We do anticipate that we're at the time of the year where that operating reserve will decrease a little bit. As our cash flows were, we passed the higher cash flow months. So as we progress through the remainder of the fiscal year, we do anticipate that number to come down a little bit, just as a natural progression of the budget itself. On page two, some items to highlight for you. Our year-to-date budget for sales tax was $132,474,353. Our sales tax collected so far were $128,843,819. Just below that, we collected from the sales, from the PJ, $5,762,330. We have budgeted $6,233,77. We knew that we would be flat for this year for revenues, particularly on sales tax, that has held true. And we don't see anything alarming on this, it's just a reminder to be careful as we go into fiscal year 2026 budget. The next line items you see highlighted were property taxes. We budgeted $19,428,497 for this part of the year. We are at $20,418,127. So nothing we see is alarming there, that's a positive number up. And on the following page, page three, our business license for the city and for the police jurisdiction. Our budgets were $47,989 and $2,404. Our actual year-to-date, year-to-dates were $50,233,229 for business license and $2,031,315 in business license in the police jurisdiction. All of that is to say, on the following page, page four, our total revenues and transfers into the general fund for the year. On the bottom right, the number highlighted, we budgeted $256,923,389. We have received year-to-date, $255,803,353. So we are right on track for what, where we thought would be budgeted. As comparison, last year, we were at $254 million, which indicates that we don't anticipate any growth in our revenues for fiscal year 26. Again, we had planned for that and so far, that has, that has been realized. On the middle of that same page, under miscellaneous revenue, to the left, you'll see the three line items of dividend income, interest on idle funds, and interest on investments. You may recall that about two months ago, we made an adjustment to that in the budget, simply because there was a change in the reporting for, in the last quarter of fiscal '23. The loose page that you have is simply for reference, I included a loose document with this. Those numbers reflected in that loose document are the amended revenues in the budget. When you see the June report, those numbers will be reflected as accurate. Once this budget amendment took place, the changes weren't made until after June 1st. That's why those aren't reflected in the May, the May budget report. Following through the reports, the next matter of substance is all of our total expenditures for the year. This is on page eight of the report. Our expenditure for the year, year-to-date, were 246, our budgeted, were $246,66,648. Our total actual expenditures for the year were $206,34,021. Our year-to-date last year was $236,67,000. If you move up that middle line, about 10 lines, you'll see transfers or capital improvements, $34,936,000. That's the difference. It's my understanding that that $36 million, the total of that were combined transfers to the parking deck and the new arena, as we know it, and that's where those transfers were. So all in all, a great report. We are still continuing to see our unallocated general fund operating balance increase. Nothing alarming in there, other than being very careful going into fiscal year 26. With that, I'll look that in, answer any questions you may have.
And a question, comment from the council.
Mr. President.
President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woods?
Just, just out of curiosity, Scott, going back to business license, page three, the increase over year-to-date for, within the city limits, not the PJ. The increase, and again, just out of curiosity, the increase, is that, you know, top of your head? Do you know if that's just due to efficiency of collections or an increase in number of licenses?
I think it's a little, but I think it's the increase in efficiency in collections, Maury's done a really good job of making some improvements there. We also know that prices have increased a little and we think it's a reflection of the combination of those two.
Gotcha. Okay. And other questions or comments from the council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Scott, this loose sheet that you provided is regarding dividends, interest on idle funds, so on and so forth. How's this, are you, are you saying that in the, like, this monthly report, that we would, these are reflected as a negative number here?
That, that is a function of the accounting system, they all reflect as negative. All revenues in, when you just pull it off of the sheet, that reflects as a negative number. It's just an accounting function of the software, those are actually all positive numbers if you're looking at cash.
Okay, so I would, I would take these line items under miscellaneous revenue and just replace them with this loose sheet?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And that's only for reference. We knew that the May report didn't have that information because the change in the budget was made after May 31. So next month, you won't have to do that, you'll see those reflected in the report that you received, all inclusive.
All right, and the general fund operating balances increased.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But I see on several of these line items that we're missing the mark on the budget. And I know I've asked in previous meetings about, are we going to spend this money by the time the fiscal year ends? One of them is, is still the same one of trees. I'm just not seeing the productivity in the forestry contracts or whatever's going on out there and then it's reflected in our budget. So I just want to ask again, are we planning on spending this money that's been allocated in the budget to, you know, address this, this tree issue we have, you know, trimming and that sort of thing?
Good morning. Yes, we are. So the other issue we have is the billing, of them putting the billing in on time to get their invoices so we can pay out. We're about 31 weeks in what we call the, so there's two different contracts. We have the corridor contract and then we have the court, the work order contracts. The work order contracts, we're about 31 weeks in and we will have that done by the end of the year. And those are, giving them the group of work orders and completing them, and I can get you a list of those items that we're doing. It's also doing the emergency trees that's happening with the weather we've been having almost daily. So there is a big movement that is happening amongst trees that we haven't had in a while in our urban forestry department. And then we are getting ready to, we, probably next week, you'll be getting the corridor contract for Hillcrest and Azalea. And we're actually getting ready to do inventory now on Michigan and Halls Mill to do that contract also before this year is out.
Okay, we're 49% behind currently. You know, and I, I think as we look at, you know, the trees that are overhanging on our roads, that seems about right. That we're probably about 49% behind on, well, probably maybe more than that, you know, that needs to get done. So I just want to draw that to everyone's attention, that we're behind on trees and we're not spending the money, at least it's not reflected in our report.
It looks like we're behind, but we're not. And what I have, I met with actually Peter and Matt this morning. So we're showing, we want to do a mapping document to show you what we've already done over the year. And when you see that, you'll see it's a big difference. It's just the billing part that looks like it's behind, but the work is not.
Okay, and then in public services generally, it looks like we're 38% behind altogether. I mean, we're at $26 million, that should have been spent to this point and we've only expended $16 million. What's the, what's causing that?
It's personnel. We have a hard time with finding equipment operators, keeping public service work sorted. It's a cyclical process, so that is one of the issues that we have across the board, is staffing and finding people to get the positions and keep the positions. So that is a struggle that we have.
It seems like this has been happening sort of year over year where we have this struggle. So it makes me wonder if we don't use more of this contract model like we've used on our grass cutting, because, you know, if it continues to happen, then the services don't get provided. And then how long can we go before we make some sort of adjustment or modification to the way we're providing the service? So I think we're sort of to that point where we should consider outsourcing some of these things since we can't hire people.
So we've been talking about that, so I've been in this position for about a year. And in that observation, we pulled up to have a backup, because what is happening, to be honest also, is the pay scale. A lot of our folks, we lose to other municipalities because of our pay scale. So we train them and then they leave, and so we're backfilling those positions. The other part of that is trying to find a backup, so then when we are behind, we have somebody to be able to come in. So we're doing, getting ready to do like a street sweeping contract, so when we're behind or equipment go down, we'll have that. So we're working on that as well. So we're working on that as well.
Okay.
So that is something we have identified as well.
Thank you, Mr. Matt.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have. Thank you, Scott.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments from this council? All right, thank you so much, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I have one more announcement. Ms. Mayor, I noticed in the audience, we have our, the new city council representative, Bo Fleming, who on November third will be sworn in as the council of replacing Joel Days for District Five. Bo, if you would please stand up and let us give you a big round of applause.
Thank you.
Round of applause.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Taken. Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for a waiver of the noise ordinance on July twenty-sixth in Kidd Park, July the fourth, Edward Street, July the fourth on Cathedral Square, July the tenth through the thirteenth in Cathedral Square, July nineteenth, North Lafayette Street, October the tenth through the eleventh on LeShure Road, and July the fourth on Charles Street.
So moved.
Second?
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Bill passes.
Public hearing today is the public hearing to consider rezoning property located at fifty-one oh five, fifty-one oh nine, fifty-one eleven, Overlook Road, from R one to B two.
This opens up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is there one president would like to address the council on this item?
Mike Tess, one, two. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'll be brief. Is this area, Reggie Hill is my name, is this area that was annexed before, and this is already business in the county district, and then it's, okay, so this was formerly in the existing District Seven, and is this moving? Okay, well, if that's the case, I just want to reiterate this idea, please, let's be mindful of changing residential areas to business areas. In District Two, a lot of this is happening where land grabs are taking place, and areas that were deemed for housing and service-based areas are now being taken over by businesses. And so I'm hoping that this is not something that's going to continue throughout the city, because we should be putting the taxpayers and the residential communities first. So if this is something that is dealing with existing properties that may have been overlooked in time, let's please do something on the front end to prevent that from happening, and in the future as well. Allow the citizens, make sure that, I think we discussed this in maybe two or three meetings ago, I think Mr. Woods brought this up, about increasing the ability for citizens to participate in meetings concerning these types of zoning changes, make sure that that's in place too. All right, thank you for being on the floor.
Is there one, as president, would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to consider the proposed modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at sixty-one oh nine Halls Ferry Road, Halls Ferry Road.
This opens up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is there one president would like to address the council on this item?
Good morning, Mr. President. I'm Jackson Burke Bigler with Row Engineering. I'm just here to represent the applicant and field any questions if necessary.
Any questions, comments? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Is there no, why, as president, I would like to address the council on this item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to once again remind this body of citywide inconveniences that need more of our attention. All of these matters today, in some fashion or another, relate to public safety. If something in writing is necessary, it can be provided. Nonetheless, please accept this statement as a formal request for an investigation to the City of Mobile's legal department. As each of you are aware, I was given an illegal traffic citation November twenty-nine, twenty-eighteen. Because of irregular efforts by the City of Mobile Legal Department, this matter took seven years to resolve. As well, each of you are aware of the unnecessary force I endured immediately after filing a complaint on the City of Mobile for its illegal proceedings toward demolishing the Mobile Civic Center. As a result, once again, we find the court proceeding similar to twenty-eighteen being delayed for failure of the city's legal department to provide truthful and timely, unaltered discovery. You each will recall during a recent committee meeting with the Mobile Municipal Court Judges, which was not recorded for the public or streamed live, that Judge Hall suggested the reason the municipal court case docket is so backlog, and so many additional people are sitting in jail, is because the City of Mobile Legal Department has failed to provide proper intelligence where required to by law and order. Yet, this same department finds time to produce and store artificial and alternative intelligence with ease, hoping to sabotage the minds and livelihoods of those who dare demand freedom and justice, and who dare hold our public officials accountable. Let's look, please, next, for time's sake, at the idea that there are multiple parks in District Two that do not have working amenities, whether those be water fountains or basketball goals. Even further, we are currently turning away children from our education, excuse me, our recreation centers during a time when such outlets are most needed for the youth, simply because they can't pay tuition to attend summer camps being hosted all day long in the recreation center our taxes already paid for, whereas our focus. Additionally, I have gotten word that retention has become an absolute threat to our Parks and Recreation Department as of date. We should be swift to remember, twenty-nineteen investigations proved that public works is no stranger to improper working conditions. Sadly, we didn't do anything about that at that time, but we must do something now. Lastly for today, please accept this as a formal request to approve an ordinance amendment restricting the passage of a new fiscal year budget during our municipal election. While incumbent candidates should have been held to these standards already, we have an example now where we potentially will adopt a budget proposed by Mr. Stimson, excuse me, proposed by Mr. Stimson, when he has already announced his intentions not to seek office. These land grab contracts should not continue to take shape the way intended by certain developers, and the people won't be distracted by an attempt to throw Mr. Pierce, another high-level employee who stood against the grain under the bus, so that the city can wash his hands of the damage similar to Chief Prime. Our housing board commissioners are approved right here by a Mobile City Council. We know the restraints of one hundred and eighty seconds, thus these and other matters I shall address next week. Thank you for being on the floor.
Sabrina Mast regarding Resolution zero-nine-nine oh seven and zero-nine-nine oh eight.
Good morning, Sabrina Mast. First, I would like to say I'm thankful to see the funding going to the animal shelter. I've never really been an advocate for an animal shelter. However, I did find myself in a situation this last couple of months where there are, there was a stray cat in our neighborhood that was pregnant, had kittens, so my husband and I, you know, took the duty of taking care of the cat and the kittens, even to the point to take them to the vet, five kittens, after they were weaned from the mother to make sure that they were okay at Highland Veterinary Clinic. However, I caught the animal shelter to surrender their little kittens to the animal shelter, but they told me to drop them off at ten o'clock when the gate opens. When I got there, it was a big, huge problem. So the lady that works there, she told me that I couldn't drop the kittens off because they were my cats, that I owned them, and I said, no, I do not. I just help take care of the kittens, because, you know, they're running around in the neighborhood. So it got to the point where the Mobile Police had to be called, because they were trying to make me take these kittens, forcing me to keep the kittens, saying that they were my kittens. So I said, no, I'm not, because this is a tax-paid shelter. I've had the cats, I've nurtured the kittens, and I cannot take care of the cats, because that's not my responsibility. But as a person of the community, I'm doing what I thought was best. So it got to the point, and also, when the police came, Officer Spears, he was very nice, he guided us through the situation, but it shouldn't have been a point that I had to call the police to, to make sure the cats were secure. And they do actually have a sign on the gate right now that says, we are not accepting animals. So that's not right, and we are taxpayers. What are we supposed to be doing out here? Then I get this, I asked him for the copy, and the lady highlighted right here, and this needs to be looked at, and it needs to be amended, because the lady said according to this, if you feed the animals, take care of the animals, or give any refuge, just, just being a citizen, that you own the cats, and that by law, according to this, they legally don't have to take any cats or dogs or anything from the community because of this highlighted part. So what are we supposed to do in the city? So, so that means if we feed an animal just in our yard, that they're saying we own the animal. But so we're supposed to neglect the animals that come in our neighborhoods and just look at them and pass them by without feeding them and watering them? That's wrong. And then when we do our part, we get there, and we have to call the police to get, to get some help? It's ridiculous. But the kittens end up staying there, but I had to go through a whole legal situation. And, and, and also, Mr. Michael Crabtree, he's the one that is the animal control manager, you know, threatening me and this and that, and I told him, listen, I don't know who you're talking to. The cats are staying, and they did. However, I would like to say also, before I sit down, I want to say thank you, Councilman Corpin, for your unwavering stuff to the community and the phone calls when necessary. I appreciate that.
Resolutions held over zero-one-eight-eight-three, authorized amendment to agreement with A-one McDuffie sanitation for residential garbage and trash service. Zero-eight-eight-eight-four, authorized purchase order to Akatus for traffic detention cameras, sensors, and supporting network hardware for Dolphin Street intersection improvements. Zero-eight-eight-eight-five, approved purchase order to Atlantis North America for marine Sonic Arc Explorer with winch. Zero-eight-eight-eight-eight, approved purchase order to Southern Emergency and Rescue Vehicle Sales for ambulance.
So moved. Second. Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced, sixty-four zero-thirty-two through eighty-eight zero-thirty-four.
Right, council rules, these will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero-three-eight-ninety-one through sixty-eight-ninety-eight.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
Zero-three-eight-ninety-one, reappoint Joy Klotz, Wayne Dean Senior, Eleanor Hannum to the History Museum of Mobile Board. Twenty-seven-eight-ninety-two, twenty-seven-eight-ninety-three are declaring C. Archer Small and Robert Fleming III elected to the Office of City Council, District Three, and City Council, District Five, beginning November the third. Thirty-one-eight-ninety-four, authorize the mayor to apply acceptance receipt for grant from Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, the Alabama Mutual Aid System twenty-twenty-five Fire and Rescue Grant. Forty-six-eight-ninety-five, honorarily rename Harrison Street as honorary Lily Baptist Way. Sixty-eight-ninety-six, eight-ninety-seven, and eight-ninety-eight are determining appropriations to opportunity for entertainers and performing arts. Skyline Woods Homeowners Association, University of South Alabama, Jag Girls serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second?
Properly moving second and in discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Dave?
I also would like to follow on the mayor and welcome Mr. Fleming to, to council chambers today. I've known Mr. Fleming for some time, and I am absolutely confident he will serve the City of Mobile well in the new office. So thank you for being here today, Bo.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Woods?
I just want to echo what Mr. Dave said, District Six, obviously with the, the changes of, of, of redistricting, District Six will be losing a northwest corner, or northeast corner, and that's going to be moving into District Five to be represented by, by you, Mr. Fleming. So I spent the past couple, I guess, spent the past couple of months introducing, making, at least turning over some of my contacts to you. I have the greatest faith that you're going to represent my former constituents very well, so congratulations, and, and again, I have every confidence that you're going to serve them well, so.
Mr. President?
Vice President?
First, I want to congratulate our president, Mr. Small, Councilman Small, on his reelection, unopposed. So congratulations, CJ, welcome back. And also reach out to Bo and congratulate you on running unopposed, and I have some contacts and information that I'm sure you will need and be using quite regularly, so we'll get together on that. But congratulations to, to both of you on running unopposed and being with the City of Mobile and your districts in the coming term.
Anyone else?
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Penn?
I want to join in with my colleagues. Congratulations to President Small on the reelection, as well as Bo, congratulations as well.
I'm not going to be the only one not congratulating. Bo, congratulations. Buckle up, it's going to be a fun ride representing your constituents, and congratulations to you, CJ. You've been awesome to work with, and I think it's well-deserved that you, and I think we very much appreciate the fact that you're still willing to serve the citizens of District Three. We're glad that you are reelected.
Well, Mr. President, it comes down to me. First, let me tell Joel, it's been a pleasure sitting next to you for the last three and a half years. Look forward to the, the next four months of sitting next to you, having you tell me, ah, just let it wait, man, don't say nothing about it. But congratulations to you, CJ, and being duly elected. And Bo, congratulations to you also. Look forward to the next four years and us continuing the progress that we've already made. I don't see this council trying to get off track. I don't see us trying to change the things that we've done. I think we've done an excellent job with the administration over the last four years in making the city go the way that it does, and I hope that we all come back with the mindset that we're going to continue the progress that we've started.
I guess this is narrowed down to me. Congratulations, Mr. Fleming, as, you know, I guess many people call you Bo. You've got some big shoes to fill and everything. Councilman Dave has held his seat down for three terms, and he did an excellent job holding his seat down, especially staying on top of the city finance. Looking forward to working with you, like I told you on last week, and in a thing that you need, just feel free to give me a call. And to my colleagues, I do appreciate you all, and looking forward to working with you all in the next four years. As I had stated earlier, before this meeting started, I said I'm still going to be busy campaigning, because I want my colleagues to come back on this council. But I just, and then to the mayor, I know I had stated that Councilman Dave's shoes is just going to be hard to fill, but the mayor's shoes is really going to be hard to fill. I was looking on last Tuesday to see where he's really going to throw his name back in the hat, but he did not. But it's very important that we continue what we are doing in the City of Mobile with these council members, and also for the person that's going to take up the leadership of being the mayor, that make sure that we elect the right person in that seat, make sure that we carry on the, the target, which is a great target for the City of Mobile, that we carry on the legacy of bringing, making sure that Mobile is one, and we making sure that Mobile stay number one, not just in the state of Alabama, but in the United States. All right? Anything else? Oh, and thank you, District Three also. I got some more comments at the end of doing the announcement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Congratulations, Mr. Small and Mr. Fleming.
Thank you.
Resolutions being introduced the first time, zero-one-eight-ninety-nine through zero-nine-nine-ten.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions, zero-one-dash-nine-hundred, zero-eight-dash-nine-oh-two, zero-eight-dash-nine-oh-three, zero-eight-dash-nine-oh-four, zero-nine-dash-nine-ten, with the rest being laid over for one week.
Second. Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
Resolution zero-one-nine-hundred, authorized amendment to professional services agreement with Helios Alliance to add additional services, extend the term, and add additional compensation. Zero-eight-nine-oh-two, nine-oh-three, nine-oh-four, approving purchase order to Ecos Systems for electronic self-service key lockers and software. Approving a purchase order to Priority Dispatch Corp. for annual renewal of dispatch and medical quality assurance software, and approving a purchase order to Site One Landscape Supply for pesticides for Azalea City Golf Course. Zero-nine-nine-ten, transfer funds from Capital Project, Capital Improvement Reserve to Building Services, miscellaneous repairs.
So moved. Second?
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Announcements.
District Five, Councilman Davis.
No announcements.
District Two, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements, Mr. President.
District Six, Councilman Woods?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I just wanted to quickly bring light to something that we obviously first read last week and approved this week, the agreement for A-one McDuffie sanitation. That, that was kind of a pilot program, per se. That was with the newly annexed in, a pilot program the cities did, and just to great success.
I just wanted to, to say thank you to, to A-one McDuffie for, um, for the service they provide, uh, uh, residents of District Six and also District Seven, um, as far as newly annexed. Uh, there, uh, no complaints. They, they're very efficient, very, uh, spot on. And I really just wanted to point out and say thank you. This relationship seems like it's working out very great, and I look forward to the, the continuation of the services. And then I saved my comments, uh, President Small's for my announcements, but I want to say congratulations. And, um, thank you, uh, being the newest on city council, just, uh, under two years in. Um, I really appreciate everything that you've done, um, as far as the guidance you provided to me. Um, you've set the example for me, um, coming in as far as public service and serving the, uh, uh, serving your residents. So, uh, your district, uh, made the right decision, um, obviously by, by choosing you the first time. And, um, I think this is just a testament to you, uh, your leadership, not only for your, your, um, your, your citizenry, but also for, for the council as a whole in the city. So congratulations, uh, and thank you again for, um, everything that you've done for me, um, in the last couple of years.
Yeah, thank you.
District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, Councilman Woods referred to the pay-as-you-go contract for District Three this morning. It's on, on our agenda. It hasn't passed yet, but, uh, I, I just wanted to highlight the partnership that we have all established with our county commission that in this latest pay-as-you-go cycle, um, they really made significant contributions to the infrastructure of our city. But I specifically want to highlight the, the relationship with Commissioner Randall Dewitt. Uh, Commissioner Dewitt has really, you know, made a commitment to the city of Mobile and, uh, of course, um, all the residents in the area by allocating a substantial amount of money towards resurfacing roads in our city, in particular District Four. Um, I don't get this opportunity often, but I'm going to read every road that's going to be resurfaced in this pay-as-you-go program that is going to kick off here pretty quick because the contract is on our, uh, agenda for approval. Uh, these are the roads that will be resurfaced here starting this year. Alder Baron Way, Alter Lane, Antares Lane, Arcturus Lane, Aries Drive, Greelot Road, I-ten Industrial Parkway North Southwest, LaRue Steiner Road, Old Pascagoula Road, Polaris Drive, Regal Lane, Regalus Drive, Sermon Road North, Sermon Road South, Sermon Road West, Taurus Drive, Three-Notch Corner Road, Tillman's Corner Parkway, US Ninety Drive, Vega Drive, and Willis Road. Not all, not the full length of some of these roads are going to be included, uh, for resurfacing, but at least the portions of some of these roads that are in the city are going to be resurfaced. So I can't say thank you enough to the commitment that the county commission has made to the city of Mobile. Uh, additionally, uh, there was an allocation on our consent agenda for the Skyline Woods Homeowners Association. Uh, we get allocated discretionary funds every year, and I try to reserve or preserve those funds for, uh, neighborhood improvements. Skyline Woods Homeowners Association has taken it upon themselves to redo their entrances. And, um, you know, when, when neighborhoods have these sort of projects, I try to contribute to them in every way we possibly can. And this is a significant investment in the sort of beautification of that neighborhood. So I look forward to seeing their progress on it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Reynolds, District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend was a pretty busy weekend in District One. Uh, we, um, had the opportunity to participate in a grocery giveaway at Right Way Christmas Center Church. Uh, big shout out to Dr. V and Pastor M. And all the young people that came out, we had Scarborough Model Middle School Football Team, South Alabama Basketball Team participated and was able to serve the community. We also held the Community Career Fair at the Dodge Community Center in Trending Gardens. Thank you to Rob Lasky, his team, and everyone that participated, all the nonprofits, all the different companies that came out. It was a great event bringing these resources to the community. And then on Sunday, we had our community prayer walk, um, where we also called for action, uh, for a thousand men, a thousand women serving in our city. Um, and I just want to thank everyone that participated in that. On Tuesdays, we're still having combo with Corey. So if you would like to sign up, any high school students, if you want to learn about leadership in government and making a difference in the community, make sure you sign up. You can send a message to Council One at City of Mobile. Um, and then we also have a great summer program taking place in District One in the Trending Garden Community Cultivate Summer Program. Um, so you can look at my, um, newsletter and hear more about that. And then what, um, also coming next, we have Cover Your Community. You will be hearing more information about that for August first, uh, for residents only in District One, um, if you, for roofing repair. And I'm really grateful for this particular program. Today is a special day. It's July the first. Um, there's a lot of people that was born on this day, but I want to give a big shout out to my mother. Happy birthday. She's watching. So happy birthday, Mom. My uncle was also born, um, on July the first, and I, and then I see Tim Hollis up there. He, he was born on July the first, so happy birthday to you as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Happy birthday to you. Vice President, District Seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Coming up on, uh, July twelfth, from eleven until two PM in the afternoon, the Mobile Museum of Art is holding a back-to-school family day where they will be giving out free backpacks filled with school supplies for the first one hundred visitors. So if, uh, you are free that day and you need school supplies, uh, the Mobile Museum of Art is the place to go, July twelfth, eleven until two. Then on July sixteenth, I will be holding a District Seven community meeting, and we are actually doing a back-to-school drive for the community meeting. Postcards will be hitting mailboxes soon, and we will have a list of supplies that are needed. These will go to the four elementary schools in the district, and the school principals will be on hand to collect the supplies. So again, you will get those postcards in the mail. The supplies that are needed will be listed, and just come on out to the Mobile Museum of Art. Of course, at a district meeting, as always, we will have a number of speakers to provide all of updated information about what's going on in the city and in the county, and of course, the district. So just be watching for those postcards to appear. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory, and greetings to the citizens of District Three. On last Thursday, Representative, State Representative Barbara Drummond and myself, we had hosted our tenth annual chat-in-chew with our seniors at the Gulf Quest Museum. Uh, it was very informative. Uh, we had over a hundred and fifty seniors to show up and gave them an update of what's going on throughout both districts, uh, District Three and State House one oh three. Again, I'd like to thank all the volunteers who come out on last Thursday, and also thank all the seniors for even coming out for a great, informative time on last Thursday. And again, to District Three, I really do appreciate you all for entrusting me again for the next four years. Uh, we still, um, busy. We still have a lot of work to do. Um, I'm very excited between the different community centers that we got coming, between Taylor Park and even on the Jennifer next week, uh, the city, we're moving one point five over to go ahead and start the demolition of the Dolphin on a Parkway for the community center there. And even from having the outport open up in twenty-twenty-seven, we have many great things that's going on in District Three. And I'm very excited. And again, thank you all so much. And again, if you ever need me, I'm just a phone call away. We're going to still continue our community service, uh, throughout the district in our meetings and, uh, in our events. Um, next event will be the Parades of Threes. All right? Anything from the administration? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor? All of-